So future generations can enjoy the safety, accessibility, and recreation that this facility will bring to all Manatee County. I'm ready to go. Are you?
Okay, welcome and good evening. Today is Wednesday, September 7th, 2022, and this is an adoption hearing of a tentative budget. It is an absolutely beautiful day today in Manatee County, and we're going to start off our meeting the way we always do. We're going to start by honoring God and by honoring our great nation. Commissioner Satcher will lead us in the invocation, after which Commissioner Bellamy will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able at this time, please stand.
All right, and I will have to not stand because the microphone doesn't go with me, but so that everyone can hear. But I believe the Lord will hear us regardless. Lord, we thank you that you are good to us. We thank you that your word says that if my people who are called by my name, I will humble themselves and pray and call on my name, I'll hear from heaven and heal their lamb. And Lord, you have been faithful and just to do that. We've seen you move on our behalf. You kept us safe, and you're continuing to watch over us, and for that, we are grateful. We pray that our words and our thoughts, Lord, that they would be guided by you tonight, that you would help us to serve the people and everyone that's here to let their views be known, Lord, that they would speak clearly and that they would be understood. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reggie.
Commissioner, I thought you forgot the words for a minute there. You left us in suspense. Okay, Dr. Hopes, I'm going to turn this right over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to push your button.
I'm having. There we go. For the introductory remarks, just want to remind everybody the deadline for filing a petition with a value adjustment board is September 9th of 2022. And now, commissioners and Mr. Chairman, we will move into the staff presentation for the tentative budget adoption. Sheila McLean, our infamous CFO, is here with her entire team, who has been working diligently since early February.
Good afternoon, commissioners, county attorney, county administrator, and citizens of Manatee County. Sorry, got to move the microphone a little bit higher. Today, I come here to present the tentative budget for the FY 2023. In the last July 28th meeting, I came, we came in front of you to show you what the July 1 certification had been and what the results of that were. Today, I present to you what the changes to the proposed budget to the tentative as a requirement of Florida statute. As of Florida statute 129, the TRIM process is right now into the fourth step, which it is the first public hearing. As we move forward in the next one, then the next step would be after this adoption of the tentative millage, we move towards adoption. The goals of this meeting are, one, to present the changes from the proposed to tentative budget with the mill, with millage reduction of .20 mill, a discussion of an additional millage reductions and the, and the impacts that this would create, and I'll give you an update on reserve balances, provide you with the timeline for the FY 23 budget adoption, and to approve the motion for the resolutions towards approving the tentative millage. The tentative FY 23 budget is, the gross budget is $2,363,764,354, with a net budget And the, the changes from the proposed in the gross budget was a, a difference of $472,885,084, and then in the net budget is $42,396,890. I will, I have presented a memo to the commission explaining all the, the changes. In the FY 23 budget, the sources, which are our revenues, our type of revenues, and I have to show you all the funding sources and the percentages as to which they are allotted to. Being the property taxes, thirty, almost 32% of the, of the, our budget of funding sources, followed by charges for services at 27.5, license, licenses, permits, fines, interest miscellaneous at 26%, other taxes 7.6, and the intergovernmental at 7.1. On the uses on the budget, FY 22, so I, the purpose of our, of a local government is to provide budget for multiple of different functions, and this reflects all those where you have committed yourselves in the budget for these functions. Emphasizing that capital outlay has been your main, um, use of the, of the monies for this budget, followed by public safety and physical environment, and so forth. The FY 23 budget changes that happened from proposed to tentative budget, and I, I need to show you this, and I have to do it because it's a requirement of TRIM, that I have to show you and tell you exactly what those changes have been. This actually discloses what those changes and then, but there is two parts of these changes. One, the part one are the changes that had affected the countywide budget. The other ones are just requirements that we have to bring in, and I will show you in the refer specifically. As per, as per the memo that you guys, you received on Friday, from proposed to tentative, the part one of the changes, as you can see, most of it, the first, the first one was the changes to the property taxes with the $10, $10 million reduction that is reflective of the .20 mill. And if there's other, the other related, associated changes with it was the transfers to the TIPS a reduction because it is affected by the change in millage, the calculation. Gas taxes, so every, the Florida Department of Revenue releases estimates after they approve their budget, so they did, so we had to re-estimate the gas taxes as the, we estimated, so it came a little bit higher at $1.2 million. We brought in also the revenues for the pari mutual because until we bring in the ports budget, we don't, we cannot bring in that revenue because that money goes directly, we're just like the pass-through, it goes to the port authority. Another change that happened was on the, on the contribution that the, for the SROs, which are, those are the school resource officers, there was a reduction on that contribution from the school board by $187,000. As you can see, there were some changes in the cash carryover. What that represents is the estimate of what we thought we were going to start our fiscal year 2023 in cash had been reevaluated based on the results of fiscal year 22. And you have both reflected on the CIP and the operating. Also, we have added the ports budget into this, and we had to realize, reassess the interest income on some of the funds, so that also created a reduction in the interest income, as we can see that the, the interest earnings are falling. And then, of course, we have the transfers. These ones are like ins and outs that happen between the funds, because some of them are funding sources to other funds. And moving into the expenses, then there were some associated expenses that, from that reduction in the ad valorem taxes, which is the collection of the tax collector fees, so that actually also reduced itself as, as an association of that. The sheriff, we, it was requested by the board to fully fund the sheriff, so we have added the $5.4 million to their budget to make them fully funded. Again, payment to municipalities, there was an increase of $233,000. This was a direct relationship to the increase in the gas taxes. Also, we brought forward for the clerk's budget, an increase of $441,000, which represented the salaries for the COLA and the pay-for-performance and so forth. As in the beginning, in the June 8th meeting, she said she would come back and, and request, as she didn't, was not ready to present that request and that ask at that time. So she came forward now, and this is what the change reflected. Also, the reduction in the ad valorem taxes also created a reduction in the CRA TIPS payments that we have to do as an association to that. Again, the ports budget expense. On the CIP additional changes, and I have to state this, say this, the CIP additional changes to projects were projects that were added between proposed and tentative. It was a total of 51 projects. And then, all the association, associated increases and decreases on the capital reserves as a result of adding, funding to the capital projects. And then, of course, what had changed in result to all of these others that I have mentioned to the budget stabilization. Moving into the next slide on page nine. I want to explain the second, the part two of the changes is, one, was the, we have to bring in into, into the budget, the prior year encumbrances and project balances, because those are still committed items, we have to make sure that they are accounted for in the budget. Secondary, we have two special districts that are brought in into the budget because that's how they adopt their own budget. So that one would be the Law Library and the Housing Authority. This completes their own cycle for adoption. We have said we would come to the board with an additional millage reduction options, and the impacts that this would, this would bring. So with that said, where are we at? We at right now in the tentative millage, recommending a .20 mill reduction to the budget, which reflects a point, a $10.5 million reduction in, in the property taxes to be received. I have to state that ad valorem taxes are impacted by two different items, two different factors. One is the changes in assessed values, which we have shown that they have been increased by 17.64%, and anything has been capped to the, by the saved our homes by 3%. That is some, is this factor we cannot control. That is something the county cannot control. The second one is military changes, whether we increase or we decrease, which we chose to decrease by the .20, the county can control. So that is what the board has chosen to do for the FY 23 budget. What does this change of the 10.5 reacts to is, it is a recurring impact to the budget, meaning it's a change in '23 that's going to affect all the years to come in the budgets coming forward. As we look at the property taxes that we have to be collected, here are some scenarios. When I talk about where we were on the proposed budget prior to the .20 reduction, we would have expected a $367 million collection in total of property taxes. Instead, with the reduction on the .20, the expect, the expectancy is to collect 357 million. Based on each tax-supported funds and the analysis that my team and I have performed, we have advised that the only fund that would take on this impact and could sustain this impact was the general fund. So we are, as you can see, we are only making the impact of the .20 into the general fund. I will show you in the next coming slides how is that going to work out for the general fund. When I talk about increase or decrease on the budget, here are the scenarios. If there was no change in the millage, absolutely no millage, and we still kept at the, at the previous year's millage, we would have, we would have received an increase of $61.8 million. In the general fund, it would have been 37.9, almost 38 million. Instead, with the .20 mill, we would be collecting $51.4 million in the general fund, 27.4. And that, that results in the, in a reduction of the unrealized gain, I would say, because even though we are reducing the millage, we are still gaining some money compared to previous year in '22 by, by a, by a $27 million. If we were to change into a .3 reduction, .3 mill reduction, the impact to the general fund would be a 15.9 mil, 15.8 million. In this slide, really, I have concentrated myself on the general fund. The impacts to the reserves from the reduction, and this is a very important slide because it was very important for the bond rating agencies to see that even though we are taking the approach of reducing the millage for the, for the sake of the citizens, our general govern, our general fund is still having an increase in revenues on the property taxes. So where does the general fund stand on this reserve impact? So by reducing the .20 millage, it reduces the mill, the millage to 4.8942 on the general fund. If you look for, if you look furthermore into the center, you can see the 20% reserves in the general fund stands still at those changes in mill at $76.8 million, but the stabilization is changing. We could take this approach, or also, we could also take the approach and say, okay, we could, we could leave stabilization the way it is, but we have to cut either levels of services or, or live without any other items that have been placed in the budget, like increasing, reducing projects in the capital improvement plan. So let's talk about the impacts to consider on the reduction of millage. One, it's a recurring basis. Second, in this existing volatile economy with inflation, do we really want to take this approach of continuing reducing the millage, or do we want to just keep it static at .20 and then stagger into the next year as the commission would choose to do, and then that way, approach it that way? We are a coastal community, there are some risks. We are starting into the hurricane season, September, as the heaviest month of the year. If anything were to happen, we still would have some good reserves in stabilization to cover this, this event. And then, of course, the high requirements that we have in the capital improvement plan, and we all seen all the number of projects that are out there. So at this point, we have to present the FY 23 military of 6.3326 with a reduction of .20 mill. As per TRIM guidelines, I have to state it out loud that we cannot go higher than this. We can go lower than this, but it would affect the next step. Also, we have accounted for in this, in '23, we are bringing forward the environmental lands, because last year in '22, we decided to just not levy it, and, and so this year, we have also increased the millage, we have restored the .05 mill into the library, which got reallocated back into the general fund. So it went from, from '22 of .1975 to .2475 now. There is so much to be done on the libraries and the projects that are coming up, so it was, it only made sense to make this change. Let's talk about, a little bit about the reserves and where we at on the tentative mill budget '23. I have talked about, we have four different types of reserves. These are the four types of reserves, the resource contingency, which those are the set of sites, the reserves for salaries, which those are to commit the funds for any attritions, changes in, in positions or anything without, without tapping into the 20% or the stabilization. The reserve for cash balance, this one is the one that I have spoken to address the inflationary cost of, of how the economy and inflation is moving forward. We have pulled 53 million into actual direct projects that are initiating in, in '23 for a total of reserves of $638,204,410. In the resource for contingency, so by Florida statute, we are supposed to have, to meet a, not to exceed cap of 10%. Have we met this calculation? Yes, at this point, with the total appropriations of $1,72 million, 10% of the appropriations is 107 million, and our contingency is 40, ends up being 40.99, which results in a 3.8%. We are far less than the 3% meeting compliance with the Florida state. Secondly, on our reserves for 20% cap, again, 20% of what? Of the total appropriations of our net budget, a billion 72, our 20% would be 214. By Florida statute 129, the capital projects reserves do not count, so we are backing out the impact fees, which is only to fund projects, and the FIS, which are also impact fees, and the capital projects resource. That 202.84 is backed out, leaving a 195.57, which represents an 18.2% of our commitment, and that is far less than the 20% we are in compliance with Florida statute. When we talk about stabilization, where are we at in all the funds and stabilization? As of now, with your tentative '23 budget, we have 116.6 in stabilization, and looking at the general fund, we have 8.9 in stabilization. This next slide is a summary of changes. What has changed from proposed to tentative? So our reserves, as I stated again, has changed by only the change in these items that I had presented to you prior. It's a total of 20.2 reduction in the general fund, mainly as a result of the reduction of your millage in .20 mill. For a total of resources, like I said before, of $663.3 million. To recap in our business operations, and I will touch more on the capital improvement on the September 13th meeting, but let's talk about recapping on the business operations. What has happened throughout this year? Our property assessed values have increased by 17.64% in our countywide assessed properties. On our unincorporated side, it's 17, 17.95%, and in the Palmeir MSTU, 11.5%. Secondly, we have capped our saved our homes to a total of 3.0, something we stated by the state of Florida, and this year is 1.3. Last year was 1.4. We have brought into the budget 55 new positions, as approved new positions into the budget. We have an increase in health insurance on both employee and employer side of 8%. We have fully funded the sheriff's budget at 100% for a total cost of $172 million. And we are placing a salary compensation increase of 8%, 5% cost of living, and 3% of pay-per-performance and merit increases. And of course, the most important, it was a military And of course, the most important, it was a mill reduction of .20 mill, representing a reduction of $10.5 million in property taxes. Continuing with the highlights of what this budget is emphasizing in. One, public safety. Second, cybersecurity. Third, healthcare. Fourth, expansion and maintenance of infrastructure. Fifth, retention of the workforce. And sixth, providing the highest level of service to our community. On the capital improvement plan, which we'll be presenting again on the September 13th, goes along with the themes: public safety, infrastructure improvements on transportation, on parks, buildings, and libraries. So what is next for our budget process? What is left to be done? Today, we are requesting of the commission to adopt the tentative millage rates at 6.3326, which is a reduction, again, of the .20 mills. In the truth in millage, once you have adopted the tentative millage, we will publish to the second public hearing on the Bradenton-Hare on our local newspaper for the second public hearing, which has to be done five days prior to the second public hearing, or two days. Before I state the motions to adopt the tentative millage, does anybody have any questions? No? Okay.
I don't, well, wait, 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 we do. Whitmore and Cruz are on the board. Commissioner Whitmore.
First of all, I talked to you before the meeting a little bit, the CIP. Since we never, we really never had any more work sessions since the big one that we had that lasted all day, I don't know what you've moved around in the CIP, and if you've added anything and moved other things towards the back. Because I don't even, it was June, I don't even recall what the commission's priorities were, but I know we went through the CIP, and I don't know if that changed, and it doesn't reflect in your, you know, I met with you twice now, and I don't know if that reflects in your report, it just, I know we're going to talk about it on the 13th, but I hate doing stuff like this at the last minute, because some commissioners may have something that they wanted moved up, and we never really had a chance to talk about it. So that, I know we're going to talk about it on the 13th, but I did notice that, and I brought that to your attention today. Also, the 55 new positions, were any of these added since the last time we all had our meetings with employees? So they're all the same, nothing's been added? No new departments, no new areas have been created?
The only thing that changed, and I presented on the July 28th meeting, was those pool items for 911 telecommunications that you had requested to be brought forward and funded in the budget.
Right, we flagged some items, and I didn't see that anywhere, but I know I actually chaired the transportation disadvantage meeting today, and I know we created a public, like a training department, training bus drivers. That was new, but I don't know if we just took from other positions and added to it, and you guys probably know that. Does anybody know?
Dr. Hope? We have been constantly going through a process. You may recall, I think you approved 148 new positions last year. Some of those positions, we reclassified during the year, and so we've been very diligent at avoiding creating new positions and looking at positions that can be reclassified, moved to the departments with the various changes. What this reflects are the positions that you directed us to fund during that last budget meeting, which was July 28th.
28th.
And those positions are in there. But there have been none, to my knowledge, or no new positions since you last took up the budget.
Just because we reclassified and moved some around, because I've never even heard of that until this morning, when they reported to the transportation department that we have.
It was a process that was, a process that was developed before I became the county administrator, and what we did is we accelerated the number of times that committee meets. There's a whole committee that meets to take up requests by directors of reclassifying positions to better use those FTEs to meet the needs of the community.
Okay, and then...
Without recreating new positions.
I know Turning Points is here, and I'm not sure when that's going to get brought up in the budget. We all met with Turning Points and someone else, that met with some of the commissioners regarding their decrease in their department. I know Dr. Hope is trying to get them back to their funding, because it decreased their social service by 52%, and it's for the homeless. So where's that reflect in all this? I mean, this, I can't, couldn't break this down.
The adult funding, as well as the children's funding, is on your agenda for the 13th. Turning Points did not receive a reduction. What happened, if you recall, in the reorganization of the county, a majority, or I would say almost all, of medical and healthcare services went to public safety. And so their funding is showing up in actually two places. And so what they were used to seeing in the old community, the old...
That's right.
Neighborhood services, which is now community and veteran services, is separate from what's in public safety for those healthcare and medical services.
It's down over by public safety EMS now?
Correct.
Okay, sorry about that, I forgot. And again, because this is all budget, and this has happened since our last meeting that we all got to have a work session on, I know that the EMS is negotiated and approved, or whatever, we approved with the union that we have, the union attorney that we have negotiated the contract for EMS, that's all, because that is recurring funding, so we have that, we'll have that.
Yes, ma'am.
And what about 911? Did that, are they still with regular staff, or they didn't do what they were...
911 had joined the union.
Oh, they did?
The union chose to negotiate the EMT paramedic contract first, so we'll be moving into the 911 negotiation. So because they, five of 50 people chose to go into the union, we have to go through the collective bargaining process. So this board has not provided the opportunity to increase their pay without the lengthy negotiations required by the union.
And that's with the whole department, because the department is now, has the option to join it if they want to.
Correct.
That's kind of what happened with EMS, okay. And I already talked to Bill Clegg, he's okay with the reserves. Okay, and I asked you this, and we've gotten emails and stuff. The clerk of the court, everything was funded except for the inspector general, they asked for two positions. And last time we all met together, we flagged the department, and that's the last time we all met and talked about the department. So, but then I heard that it was decided that, from you, that we not fund them, the two positions for inspector general. But last time we all met, Kevin had flagged the department, and we were going to talk about it at a future meeting, and that's the last time we ever talked about it. So I would respectfully request that those positions be put back in. That's just wondering, we can talk about it when I'm done, okay.
Is that a motion? Because you'll need a motion.
Oh, yeah, okay, I would like...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Clegg.
So...
Should I wait?
This is a hearing pursuant to Florida statute 200.065, and there are only a few things we can do in this hearing. One is to adopt a tentative millage, and then adopt a tentative budget, and a tentative budget for special districts. So getting down into the details of those things is really something that you ought to handle in a separate meeting.
Like the 13th?
Yeah, you could do that on the 13th, you can always decide, I mean, are we really going to change our tentative millage?
No.
Because we're going to fund two inspector general positions?
Right.
That's not really on the table in this meeting. We're very limited by statute in what we're supposed to do here tonight.
Oh, yeah, I didn't think we would.
Then Commissioner Whitmore, I would ask, do you have, some of your questions are more geared towards the 13th, all of them are geared towards the 13th. Do you have any questions that are geared towards setting of the millage today?
Yeah, I've gone through this budget, and you know, this is the one responsibility I like.
Mr. Clegg wants to make one more comment.
I just, I want to make one more point, very quickly, which is the statute gives us the order in which we need to make these decisions. So you have three items, and they have to be moved separately in that order, and we need to take public comment on everything first. We don't have the flexibility in this meeting that we do in our regular meetings, because it's dictated by statute.
Sheila told us that.
Okay.
She showed the slide. Am I mistaken, maybe I am, are we increasing, and this is all budget, 7.5% the budget, it's like 5%? Or is it 5% increase? I heard it was 7.5, but I think it's 5.
Are you referring to employee compensation?
All employees.
5% cost of living, and 3% combined for a combination of pay for performance and merit increases?
Okay, good, thank you. In the budget, only because we never had a meeting since, and this doesn't affect anything, it's only, I think, 18,000 or 20,000. In this budget that we're approving, I know the first reading, did the home speech get their 18,000? At one point, we pulled it, and then we never talked about it again.
These are line items that have nothing to do with setting the millage rate?
In every meeting, 16 years, we've been able to ask questions, so I'm just asking a question from whoever does the budget.
And so you can't ask questions.
I think it's still in there.
I guess you can ask questions, but you're consuming time of us and like 20 staff.
It's not consuming time.
It is consuming time.
It isn't.
It literally takes time.
Well, I'm sorry, that's what we get paid for.
And that's fine, but you're also paying 20 people to sit out here. I mean, I'd like to know what that's, how would effect that will have on the budget, is they sit out here making an hourly rate?
I'm sorry, and I do respect, I have the floor.
Asking questions have nothing at all to do...
I have the floor.
They have nothing to do with setting the millage, the tentative millage.
Did we pull, do we still, I think, I talked to Sheila, we still have the money in the budget for home speech, correct?
That was going to be brought out of later days.
On the 13th?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I asked you earlier, and we did. And then, okay, that was it. Wait a minute.
Commissioner Cruz.
No, I'm not done, I'm sorry.
You surrender the floor, ma'am.
I'm not done.
Commissioner Cruz, you have the floor.
Kevin, don't be a bully, I'm not done.
You surrendered the floor.
I'm not done. Please give me the respect.
You're done.
Yeah, yep.
I just have a quick question. Are there more slides?
No. This is the adoption motions, and...
Okay, here's what I ask. On July 28th, I specifically made a motion. In fact, it was so overwhelmingly unanimous that three people seconded it, and a fourth person took the second, when I made the motion, that we immediately cut the millage by .2 on July 28th, because we wanted it to be reflected in the TRIM notices, forever that did, since they still went up. But in my motion, I specifically, because I said I want a more than .2, I said, let's do .2 now, that offset the environmental land, plus a nominal little .05, pocket change, fill him with a cup of coffee. But I said, in this meeting, I wanted the administration to come back with additional .1 mill cut, .2 mill cut, .3 mill cut, and an explanation of where those dollars would come from. In fact, it was so clear that, or stated so clearly, because the clerk specifically asked me to repeat the specific millage amounts, so it was recorded in the record.
George, I thought we did that slide.
It was a .1, it was a .1.
Commissioner?
Go ahead, show me.
We will go, put the slide up, we put all the way to a .5, including a rollback rate on a slide.
Yeah.
And where the money would go and come from.
Hold on.
Everybody can't talk at once.
Well, we'll pull the slide up.
Go ahead. Okay, no, I see a slide, here's the problem, these are just numbers. Maybe, okay, maybe that's where I'm lost, because I saw this slide, I saw this slide last night, but most of the information here was the .2 that we approved, plus a .1. Those were kind of our two base case options. Then we had this one table, but all you're doing is taking money out of the general fund. And maybe I just wasn't clear. My point was, I don't want to slash an additional, you know, $13 million from .2 to .45, if I don't know roughly where that 13, just saying it's coming from general fund doesn't do. I was kind of hoping, since it was like a two-month window, that it would be a little bit more of an informative descriptive, and I know we're not supposed to go into that, and we just had this discussion with Commissioner Whitmore, but I was hoping it would be like, well, we can go from the .2 to a .3, but now we're going to close the libraries an hour earlier. We're going to do this to this, but the staff's only going to get 3% raise, say, we're going to see our options to see our impact, because all you're showing me is, if I go from .2 to .4, it's $21 million less than general funds. I have no concept in the world in how you would get to that $21 million. That's what I was kind of hoping for, that's where I'm going with this. I saw this table, but this table doesn't answer any of my questions, because I want to lower this further, I want it to lower. The reality is, in my personal opinion, it needs to be lowered by 17.8 more mills, is where I calculated. So that's not to say we're going to get all the way to it, but I don't have any concept. If I'm going to get halfway there and do the .3 now, or just go all the way up to the .4 to get to that 17.8 mills, I don't know what those dollars are. And that's the problem I'm running into, is I don't know, I don't know how lowering the general fund affects my life or the lives of people in Matta T. County. I know it's going to help their bottom line in terms of their pocketbooks, because it's going to lower their taxes, but what's the trade-off to that? And that's where I don't have any, and that's where Commissioner Whitmore's going. I understand we're not supposed to go into the nitty-gritty here, but that's the problem on how our entire budget system works, is we go into this line item thing months ago, and then by the time we get to the millage, it's like, oh, we knocked 10 million off, knocked 20 million off, knocked 23.7 million off. We don't know what that means, because we don't revert back to the line items to see specifically, we're going to not do this one road, we're not going to pay these salaries, we're not going to hire these people. I don't know what this means. So now I just have to blindly propose a lower millage than what we're currently proposing, and cross my fingers and hope it doesn't come out of things I don't want it to, just to kind of prove a point of not wanting the millage cut.
Dr. Hope, can you give us some direction here?
The reason why it's mostly out of the general fund is the general fund is about the only place that we can cut millage, because other millages are fixed.
I understand, but a lot comes out of the general fund. I don't know specifically where the proposal will be on how you would get there. I don't even know where you're going to get the 10.5 in the current .2, much less how you would get to the 21 million in a .4.
The 10.5 was already shown in details in the budget. We did that almost immediately. If you recall, we, because of last year's experience, we anticipated at least a .2 mill reduction, and so most of the budget discussions that we had included the .2 mill reduction while also bringing in the environmental lands tax. The CFO has all of the detail of the impact and ramifications of every one of those numbers, including two other reductions that I had her take off the slide, because it was a bit busy, she had a .5, and then I think there was a...
One mill.
A 1-mill reduction, and that feeds into all of it. The CFO scheduled one-on-one briefings, I think, with everybody, and the data is available. We can show you the impact. I will just tell you that a .3, a .3 reduction, which is that additional .1 that you're talking about, is doable, and we could manage it. The problem is, remember, the general revenue fund is that revenue that you can use for just about anything, including a deficit in a project. We have one, we have one project that I'm already hearing that the cost is four times what was in the budget just for that one project. And so that's where we are, but we, you know, a .1 mill addition is doable, it will come out of the general fund reserves and stabilization, and we'll bring it pretty tight. I think 5 million out of that brings it down to, Sheila, what would the balance be in that?
A .5?
Not much. We, as you noticed, we...
.05.
In order to get to the .2, we've reduced reserves by over $50 million. So that, when the CFO talks about it carries out into latter years, she has, believe me, all the budget documents and spreadsheets, taking out what that .0 does five years out.
To get to the .2, which is $10 million worth of decreased taxes, we had to lower the reserves by $50 million?
If you go to the reserve account that she showed, because we funded, we had to fund other stuff, other inflation factors out of reserves.
Well, we didn't lower the reserves by 50 million to get to the .2, we lowered the reserves by 10 million, because that's what we lost on the .2. The other board, it just organically was going to lower whether we lowered the millage or not.
From the proposed, I think from the... From the proposed, I think from the proposed budget to the tentative millage that we're discussing tonight, was it a $54 million shift in the reserves?
In the general fund, there was only 10.
10 in the general fund.
With a .20.
But then the total, you have a slide in there where the total, the total difference was 54 million or something?
If we did the, a change in millage of...
Those aren't tied to the millage reduction.
If you did another .05 millage, it would be approximately $6 million more, which we have chosen to reduce stabilization, not cut services.
Right.
There is the wish of the board to do that instead, then we would have to go and start dipping into projects that are in the capital improvement plan.
So I'm looking at the slide. I'm looking at the slide that says reserves. FY '23 proposed is $722,659,733. The tentative, which we are discussing tonight, is $638,204,410, which is a difference of 84 million, a negative difference of 84,455,323. So from the proposed budget to the tentative that we're here today, which includes the .2 mil reduction, this table shows an 84 million, 84 and a half million dollar reduction in reserves.
Because some of that got placed into projects.
I understand, I understand. It got placed into projects...
Yes, sir.
Because of the cost of those projects, et cetera.
Yes, coming at high.
Right. That's, the point I'm making is we've already, we've already taken $84 million out of reserves for projects, contingencies, et cetera.
That's correct.
And we've been able to fund the .2 mil reduction.
That's correct.
Commissioner Cruz.
I can't process. I'm good.
Move on.
Whitmore, Satcher, and Baugh. Commissioner Whitmore.
Thank you. What I was going to say, too, is we have to look at stuff that we aren't planning, but we know we're gonna have to be paying for, that will be coming out of reserves. And that's the dam. If we're gonna just fix what we are doing now, which is not in anywhere, in no line item, it's, I think it was 30 million, but we've also talked about replacing it possibly at another location, which you can double and triple that, probably. And then the landfill. To buy a new landfill, it's gonna be over 50 million over 10 years. And 30 million to close the one we have, and we have to monitor that for 50 or 100 years.
Parking garage.
Oh, and a parking garage? Oh, the parking garage? So be, be conservative. We, what are we gonna do? Then we're gonna raise taxes in a few years? We don't want to do that. That, we're, we're trying to plan ahead, and a disaster. I mean, this is the first time, knock on wood, we haven't had a hurricane in 30 years since I've been in this office, and I've been through 30 or more hurricanes. And we need to have that reserve out of general to be able to do what we need to do. So it's nice to try to get it down as low as you can until, until something happens and you don't have the money. And the public's gonna go, well, why didn't you think of that? So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So looking at these numbers, so if I understood you correctly, when we're changing from the .2 and then the different options that we've been given, the reason why there might not, well, obviously, we're trying to stay general with this meeting, because we're setting the millage. But, I mean, it is set up to where we can trim, or we can take the taxes down more without dipping into our 20% reserves. It will affect, if I under, and without hitting services at all, without hitting projects at all, there's the possibility of projects going up even more. We do realize that. But as, you know, our best people, looking at everything right now, we don't believe it will hurt our services, and we don't believe it'll hurt our projects. It would take down our, what's the reserve, the other word for reserves?
Stabilization.
Stabilization, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if we did the .3, how's our stabilization fund? Does that zero it out, or is it still some in the stabilization beyond the 20%?
No, it'll, it'll bring your stabilization down, if you go back to the slide on page...
Yeah, and I did, that is in the slide, but I...
Yeah, page number 15. It'll bring the stabilization to 6. million dollars. 6.4.
And then, if we were to stick at .2, the stabilization is what? 8.9.
8.9.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any reason not to at least do that personally. So, all right, thank you. No other questions, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baugh.
Yeah, this is great conversation. As far as, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. County Administrator, but the meeting on the, when is the next meeting? I don't have it in front of me now.
The 13th.
The 13th, that'll be the CIP budget.
The budget, that's what I was gonna ask you. That's when we'll go over CIP, which includes the dam, et cetera. That's not for tonight. The other thing that I want to mention is, first of all, I want to thank the Finance Department. You guys have done a tremendous job, all of you.
Thank you.
And you have been extremely available to all of us with briefings and so forth. And, and I just think that, you know, we need to make sure that you understand how much we appreciate what all you've done and the performance that you've come up with on this budget. You did a great job. Right now, we're looking at the sheriff getting 100% funding. I think that's the first time in my 10 years being on this board that the sheriff has gotten 100% funding. Neil, you should be thrilled.
I asked him why he was here.
Yeah, I know, I guess he wanted to follow, make sure we followed through. And, and again, Sheila, you and I talked this afternoon in my briefing, the last briefing I had with you. You know, we don't have any control over what the value of homes is. That's all the property appraiser, we have no control over that whatsoever.
Correct.
I wish we did, it would be so much easier. We could just say, hey, you know, don't raise them up so high, right? But we can't do that. Healthcare has gone up 8% for the county. I, and I think it's been mentioned here already tonight, you know, inflation is killing us. It's a major problem. It is almost hard to, to set a budget when you realize that where you are today is not where you're gonna be next week, because the inflation continues to rise. You know, we just got through the primary. I can't wait for the general election. Maybe we can do something about this inflation, slow it down. We have a lot of traffic congestion still going on in the county that we need to work on. And the environmental lands, which raised our millage, that should be pointed out. The environmental lands, that percentage, was done by the citizens themselves. You know, they voted to increase their property tax to cover being able to buy environmental lands. And while we're on that note, I'm assuming, Mr. County Administrator, that we'll have something come before us before long in properties to look at, I'm assuming.
Yes, ma'am.
I know, I read something on that recently, so that's why I wanted to ask. I actually had a reporter, Jay, are you listening, who asked me about that the other day? So good to know. The libraries, I think, is, you know, we're gonna have to be very careful, I see Lee here. We're gonna have to be very careful on the libraries, because we are trying to get back and increase the hours, and, and that means more employees in our libraries. But, you know, considering inflation where it is, that's probably the one place that parents can take their children and spend a nice day without it costing them a fortune. So it's a good thing for the community in so many ways. I did have a lot of conversation with Sheila today about the stabilization fund. Because I also know that if we did have a catastrophe in Manatee, which I pray never happens, but we need to be prepared for it just in case it does happen. I think we could reduce, and Sheila and I talked about this today, reducing the millage a little bit more, because it would take away from stabilization. But at the same time, if we did have a catastrophe, if we had a major hurricane that came through, we could adjust almost all of the funds that we have to help with that emergency. Now, we don't want to do that. I mean, that's not something we necessarily want to do. But, you know, you can't plan for a catastrophe hitting Manatee. It's hard to plan for that, because you don't know where it's gonna be, you don't know how severe, you don't know where it's gonna, what's gonna be severe about it. You really don't have anything to base it on. So to look at just a stabilization fund, yes, I, I know where Commissioner Whitmore's coming on that, because, you know, Ed was famous for them, and we lived on it and used it, and it helped to get us through a hard time, not because of a catastrophe in Manatee, but because of the depression or recession, whichever I called it, the depression that was going on at the time. But even so, with the stabilization fund that we're looking at, that's, that's a pretty good fund. That's a pretty good amount. And so we could survive on that if need be for a while. And let's remember, if there is a major catastrophe that goes on, which I pray never happens here, it would break my heart, there will be other federal funds and federal agencies coming in to help us with all of that, as they always do, every time. I do not want to cut services. I don't want to see that happen. So for me, I, you know, I, as much as I want to reduce millage as much as we can, because our citizens need help right now, because of the inflation and the, the housing situation. But at the same time, I don't want to cut services, because our, our services is part of what helps to give our citizens a good quality of life here in Manatee. And, and I think that's what we're known for. So we have to be very careful on that. But I would not mind going down on that millage a little bit more and cut that stabilization fund a little bit. I know it would be tough, it would be something we'd have to look at very carefully, and I would really love to study that more, especially with our CIP coming up. But I think the main thing that everyone wants to look at here today is, do we really need to cut the millage more? How much can we really afford to do to keep the services going that we have? And also, are we prepared to protect our citizens in the case of an emergency? So those are the questions that I'm asking. I realize it's easy to want to get into, you know, bantering with each other, but this meeting, that's not the place to do that. So let's remember what we're doing, why we're doing it, and make some great decisions for the citizens, because that's what it's all about. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Bellamy.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to, you know, keep out in front of us, in the past, we, we had a line item in the budget for catastrophic incidents.
That's the contingency or whatever.
And there was an amount of money that was there. It's, it's not here.
Oh, your mic's not, you're right, it was an emergency one last year.
Get it there, get it there. But we, we had it, and it's not, it's not in here, and I may have not seen it, in all due respect. And I'm with Commissioner Baugh. Thank you, and all of you all, for everything that you do, the numerous people, I'm not there, that's why I need you all to give us the direction we got. But a couple of things about the, being in the peak of hurricane season, and everybody's trying to figure out what's going on, we are very thankful that we have not experienced anything at this point right now, but I'm sure there's some level of anticipation from all of us. We did used to have a line item there for these particular, the concerns of a hurricane or something like that. And I'm not sure where it's at, and if I missed it, I apologize. I do want to make a point, in stabilization, good. I do want to make a point, when we started talking about the federal funds, I think, the way I understand it, that's money that has to be reimbursed. So we have to put ours up front.
100%.
Right?
Not all of it.
Okay.
Six years.
That's why I say, from what I understand...
It's two or three years.
Yeah, to get some, to get some of it back. And, and I think, we just need to be mindful of that. What I would like to see is say, okay, in the past, we had a couple of tropical storms, they created some issues, and then we had a major, they got real close, they created some evacuation, it's concerned, and trees were down and things like that. And then we also had, you know, Red Tide, they created some problems. What did that money look like at that point? And then, if we know what that looked like, we can give a ballpark projections based on not being able to predict where we are with inflation right now, but we can take some of that percentage and say, this is what we need to put on there, and make sure we at least have a little bit of that. That's what I would like to see. But, so, so in case there's a catastrophic incident, we can be somewhat prepared and keep out in front of us that it's gonna have to be reimbursed at the federal government. Listening to Commissioner, Commissioner Cruz with the point to cut, I think what I was looking for, and I don't never try to speak for them, I just try to be Reggie, is, you know, a clear understanding of the impact of the cuts and the line items that will be impacted. And, and, and I hate to ask you all this, can we have that by the 13th? Because that's what I was thinking, as far as, when you have that millage cut and it's coming, you know, from the general, or whatever line item that it's going to impact, let us know. Because we, all of us up here are saying we don't want to cut services. Am I correct? So that money's gonna come from somewhere. So where's it gonna want to cut, where will it come from? How much? And please inform us, so we can make a more informed decision. That's the way I interpreted some of those, those concerns, and that's the way I would ask to look at it when we start talking about it. My bottom line, you know, what line items will be impacted with the .2 millage cut? That's just my question to be out there. And I probably could have asked, asked that the other day, but it came up a little bit differently. So that's it for me, for right now.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Whitmore.
If you haven't noticed, Sheila's face is getting a little flushed. I've met with her a couple times, and she's told me that there is, she can't, she would, can't recommend .3 because of what, I know you all are saying it, but because what it will do to trickle down to everything else. Talking about a disaster in government financing, they ask you to at least have six months operating to run a government in your reserves, I think. I know some of the, and... That's your 20%. How much? That's your 20%, the 18.2. 20%. You have to have that, that's what we did on the islands, we had to. And also FEMA, you have to do everything upfront, like you said, and you get paid maybe two or three years later. Charlie Hunstaker just got paid for something from 2017 from FEMA. So it does take a while. And again, you're, we were just talking about our professionals, our professionals are recommending .2. Well, you asked, you, you asked, I'm not recommending anything, I'm just advising the board as my opinion. As our CFO, yes.
That's a very, very safe response. Very safe.
I was gonna say, because you're sitting there.
That's a conservative response.
With answers like that, you'll be sitting on this side of the dais in no time.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz, Satcher, and Dr. Hopez.
Yeah, I know we have to go to public comment, but the county attorney said we can lower the millage. Make a motion to lower the millage today, but I don't know, it's not what the, the motions are. So I'm just putting myself on the board to let the county attorney know that that's a motion we're going to need ready when the time is right.
Mr. Clegg.
What I will do is, get with Sheila, I may ask for a five-minute recess, just to make sure, because the motion for the millage is pretty easy, but we have to make sure it carries through in the motion for the tentative budget as well.
Correct, I was trying to read all three of these.
I'll need to talk to her, but we, we can do that. The board has that option tonight, if the board wants to do that.
Why don't we do this, if Satcher, Dr. Hopez, and Bellamy on the board, why don't we hear from those three? We'll recess, and we'll come back to Cruz. So George, if you just put yourself back on, you'll be at the bottom of the list, and it'll work out. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. So if I understand correctly, and fortunately, the county administrator's going right after me, so he can say if I'm wrong. me, so he can say if I'm wrong, but when we say, you know, I want the line item of what services we're going to have to reduce, or I want to see what projects are going to have to be cut, if I understand correctly, the answer to that is none. We're not going to have to change any line items of projects. The only, and it's an important thing, but the only thing that would be changed, and in fact, our reserves would not change, we still would have 20% of reserves as dictated by Florida statute. The only thing that would change is the additional reserves, the stabilization, and it would affect that depending on what decision we make. So the bottom line is, this is a rainy day fund, which is important when you're running an entire county. And so the question is, you know, where do we want that fund to be? How comfortable are we at lowering that? I think that we are comfortable, you know, obviously more comfortable with lowering it than previous boards. I think that's advisable, I think that's a good thing. We should not be hoarding the taxpayers' money. We should be able, you know, to do as much and give as much back to them as possible. That's my opinion on that. So I guess that's all, that would be the main thing, is what we're going to do, where we are comfortable with taking that stabilization to. I did have one other point, and that is that when we talk about, you know, what if Farmageddon happened? And of course, the truth is, there'd be other concerns, but.
More important.
But we do, we do live in, we do live in, you know, there are hurricanes here. And so if something catastrophic were to happen, I believe that there was a number earlier in the presentation of cash reserves, and at that point, we would have to lean on people to get real creative as far as, the way I think of it, is we've got a big basket full of, you know, each thing of, I think of it as M&amp;M's, everything's got a color, everything's got a name of where that money's supposed to be spent, right? If we have to forward some of that and use it somewhere else for a little while, because, you know, 44th Avenue East, the very, the payments that we need to make at the end of the year don't have to be made at the beginning of the year. So if we had to forward it, we can. That's what they call their inter-fund loans, I believe. We don't want to do that, nobody wants to get in that position, but my point is, there's $600 million in our bank account that I bet these creative people could figure out a way if there was $5 million less in it to still take care as well as possible if there were to be a hurricane. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I always thought of them as Skittles, but if you don't have M&amp;M's, that's fine. I will just throw a sort of a caveat into this, Commissioner Satcher, and say that as I'm looking at the screen, I see the money coming out of stabilization this year, but you're setting a millage precedent and rate. That means that in the future, if it, if you need to, if you lower it significantly this year, that money may not be there next year, you may have to raise taxes in the future. And that's, of course, a decision for each individual commissioner to make. I am a strong libertarian-leaning Republican who will never, ever vote to raise taxes. So if you lower it beyond where it needs to be, you have, you have other friends up here, right? But I'll never vote to raise them. So I just caution you to not lower them too much to a point where, ooh, we may need to go back and raise those in the future, because you don't have a friend in me if you go to do that.
Gotcha, I understand. And that's a valid point. And then I do want to say, since Dr. Hopes is coming up after me, you know, all of us, I prefer to do major disagreements behind the scenes.
Me too, that's fun, right?
But if I'm wrong, 100% wrong, go ahead and go for it, now you aren't going to hurt my feelings, thank you.
Dr. Hopes, you're prepared to not hurt his feelings, sir.
Thank you. And the chair pointed out, I mean, look, if I lacked confidence in being able to manage the fiscal year '23 budget at a .3 millage reduction, I would not have a slide that shows a .3 millage reduction and where the money would come from. And like the chair said, you know, there, each of you has a tolerance for risk with regards to what may occur next year, which would be the year that some of you are up for reelection. But as you know, I, I and the team have almost completed the sort of redesign of Manatee County Government. I've got a much better handle on where our expenses are, where our people expenses are, and how I think I can achieve, how we as a team can achieve some additional efficiencies. So the initial reduction, should you adopt an additional .1 mil above what went out in the trim notice, would come out of the general revenue stabilization fund. I just want to put a few things in perspective. There is a commissioner that has absolutely the largest geographic area and has the fewest number of soccer fields per square mile of land, who would like to see a new soccer field in an area, and I got the pricing of the soccer field today with lights.
It's almost out of the market.
With lights.
Enough, Sean.
With, with lights, I'm just telling you, no, it's a million dollars. I just want to put, I want to put the $5 million into perspective. A million dollars is the current cost projection of a lighted, full-size soccer field. That's all I'm saying. I'm confident that during the public speaking time, the CFO can work with me and we will have the numbers to go in a motion to be in compliance with state statutes, should you choose to do that.
Yeah, when you complete, we're going to do a five-minute recess, we'll come back, we'll do public comment, and then.
Those are all my comments.
Okay. Commissioner Ball, do you need to speak before we go to recess?
Just real quick. I have no doubt that if we do reduce it, it reduces the stabilization fund, but I think your soccer fields are going to be just fine.
AR.
I'm voting against the soccer fields. Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute recess, when we return, we will do public comment, and then we'll go to Commissioner Cruz. We're in recess. I always thought of them as Skittles, but if you don't have M&amp;M's, that's fine. I will just throw a sort of a caveat into this, Commissioner Satcher, and say that as I'm looking at the screen, I see the money coming out of stabilization this year, but you're setting a millage precedent and rate. That means that in the future, if it, if you need to, if you lower it significantly this year, that money may not be there next year, you may have to raise taxes in the future. And that's, of course, a decision for each individual commissioner to make. I am a strong libertarian-leaning Republican who will never, ever vote to raise taxes. So if you lower it beyond where it needs to be, you have, you have other friends up here, right? But I'll never vote to raise them. So I just caution you to not lower them too much to a point where, ooh, we may need to go back and raise those in the future, because you don't have a friend in me if you go to do that.
Gotcha, I understand. And that's a valid point. And then I do want to say, since Dr. Hopes is coming up after me, you know, all of us, I prefer to do major disagreements behind the scenes.
Me too, that's fun, right?
But if I'm wrong, 100% wrong, go ahead and go for it, now you aren't going to hurt my feelings, thank you.
Dr. Hopes, you're prepared to not hurt his feelings, sir.
Thank you. And the chair pointed out, I mean, look, if, if, if I lacked confidence in being able to manage the fiscal year '23 budget at a .3 millage reduction, I would not have a slide that shows a .3 millage reduction and where the money would come from. And like the chair said, you know, there, each of you has a tolerance for risk with regards to what may occur next year, which would be the year that some of you are up for reelection. But as you know, I, I and the team have almost completed the sort of redesign of Manatee County Government. I've got a much better handle on where our expenses are, where our people expenses are, and how I think I can achieve, how we as a team can achieve some additional efficiencies. So the initial reduction, should you adopt an additional .1 mil above what went out in the trim notice, would come out of the general revenue stabilization fund. I just want to put a few things in perspective. There is a commissioner that has absolutely the largest geographic area and has the fewest number of soccer fields per square mile of land, who would like to see a new soccer field in an area, and I got the pricing of the soccer field today with lights. With lights. With, with lights, I'm just telling you, no, it's a million dollars. I just want to put, I want to put the $5 million into perspective. A million dollars is the current cost projection of a lighted, full-size soccer field. That's all I'm saying. I'm confident that during the public speaking time, the CFO can work with me and we will have the numbers to go in a motion to be in compliance with state statutes, should you choose to do that.
Yeah, when you complete, we're going to do a five-minute recess, we'll come back, we'll do public comment, and then.
Those are all my comments.
Okay. Commissioner Ball, do you need to speak before we go to recess?
Just real quick. I have no doubt that if we do reduce it, it reduces the stabilization fund, but I think your soccer fields are going to be just fine.
I am.
I'm voting against the soccer fields. Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute recess, when we return, we will do public comment, and then we'll go to Commissioner Cruz. We're in recess. Has anyone called in to speak on the setting of the tentative millage rate?
We do have one caller. With caller ending in 804-804, please press star six to unmute.
Mr. Meehan, after you press star six to unmute, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak on the setting of the tentative millage rate.
What if it's Mrs.?
Mike Meehan, Manatee County resident. So the .15 increase for environmental lands, little-known fact, the homestead 3% increase in excess value equates to a .43 millage increase. So the total millage increase going into this meeting is .58. Now, you've already cut the millage by .2, so that leaves a residual of .38 to avoid any kind of tax increase for your civilian libertarians sitting on the board. So a .3 millage increase is going to result in a .28 overall increase in expense to the county or to the citizens. Secondly, what to do with your non-restricted cash at $683.9 million? Assuming a $900 million expense for the upcoming year, and the Florida max for reserves is 30% of that expense at $270 million. You've already got 42.6 committed. You've got 91.4 assigned, and you can add 136 of unrestricted reserves to bring it up to that 270 max. This is where Ms. McLean and I have a serious difference of opinion in interpreting Florida statute 12901. So basically, you've got a whole bunch of extra money, $414 million of excess reserves. How can you bring that number down to bring it into compliance with Florida statute? You could consider returning $65 million that you got from the federal government last year to the citizens, either in the form of a cash check or a credit against this upcoming year's property tax. You can adopt an additional .38 millage cut to offset the homestead increase, which would cost you $16.1 million. You could adopt a one-month sewer water holiday bill, billing holiday during the month of December, which would cost you $13.9 million, and you could double the appropriation for human services by $1.2 million. So by adopting some of these measures, you could take a substantial cut into the funds that really are above what you are allowed to hold by Florida statute, which is approximately $270 million. Third point, restricted cash now is over $500 million. And I would suggest to the commission that they contact the Florida delegation and ask for a law that allows restricted general reserves above a five-year average annual expenditure to be converted to unrestricted cash, which can then be used for any purpose. So the idea is these restricted reserves just continue to grow and grow. It's hard to find projects to spend the money on. Take a five-year average of what those expenditures have been.
Mr. Meehan, you're about...
Above that.
You're about 30 seconds over time, sir. But thank you very much.
Okay. Well, you got the point.
We do. Yes, sir. Thank you very much for calling in. Is there anyone else who has called in to speak on the setting of the tentative millage rate?
That is all the callers we have at this time.
Okay. We're going to close public comment at this time, and we'll go to Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I want to make these three motions based upon a .3 mil decrease, and I will defer to County Attorney Clegg for his revised motions.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cruz, the first motion would read, "I move to adopt Resolution B-23-001, adopting the fiscal year 2223 tentative millage rates with a change to the general fund millage to 4.7942 and a corresponding change to the total countywide operating millage to 6.2326." Did I get that right, Sheila?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz to set the millage rate. We are going to do this verbally and not through the computer software.
We have comments.
Through the system. I don't have anyone on the board to speak at this time.
I've been... You keep taking me off.
I've not taken you off.
Sorry. I've done it twice. Sorry. There we go.
Okay. Commissioner Whitmore.
I totally don't support this. The Gulf is 90 degrees now. This is a bad fiscal conservative decision because you're not looking at what's going to happen. And I've been here long enough to see things that have happened that we did use those extra funds from. So I'm not going to support the motion.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Whitmore will not be lowering the taxes because the water is too hot.
No.
I'm just teasing you, ma'am. I'm just teasing you. I understand where you're going, where you're coming from. Okay, there's no one else on the board. I just got to lighten it up a little bit. So there's no one else on the board. So we will go ahead and hold the vote at this time. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, the motion passes by a vote of five to one with Commissioner Whitmore in opposition.
All right. Second motion.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cruz, the second motion would be, "I move to adopt Resolution B-23-002, adopting the fiscal year 2223 tentative budget for Manatee County with reductions to the cash balances and net expenditures to reflect the reduction in millage approved pursuant to Resolution B-23-001."
So moved.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz and a second by Commissioner Baugh. I don't have anyone on the board at this time. We have held public comment, so we'll move forward with the vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Don't appreciate laughing, please.
Madam Clerk, the motion passes...
Thanks, Ms. Baugh.
Madam Clerk, the motion passes by a vote of five to one with Commissioner Whitmore in opposition. Commissioner Cruz.
The last one?
Commissioner Cruz and Mr. Clegg.
I'm not sure that there's any change to the last one.
Well, I don't have it in front of me, so...
No.
The recommendation would be, "I move to adopt Resolution B..."
Twenty-three.
B-23-003, adopting the fiscal year 2223 tentative budget for Manatee County dependent special districts.
So moved.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Clegg, your mic was not on. I need you to read the whole thing over again, sir.
Read it again. I'm sorry. We have a lot going on up here this evening.
It's a very exciting night, I understand.
Live board tonight. So I will read that again. "I move to adopt Resolution B-23-003, adopting the fiscal year 2223 tentative budget for Manatee County-dependent special districts."
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz and a second by Commissioner Satcher. There are no commissioners on the board to speak. We have held public comment. We'll move forward with the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, this passes by a vote of six to zero. Dr. Hopes, do you have any further business for the day?
Yes, I believe the CFO needs to read into the record the statement, the announcement of the aggregate millage rate comparison. Is that correct, Madam CFO?
That is correct. The aggregate millage rate for fiscal year 202223 is 6.7832 mills, and the change from the rollback rate, aggregate millage rate, is 6.4344 mills. For the operating millage is hereby determined to be 5.42.
The additional .1 mill reduction.
That was the number based on the .2, not the .3, correct?
I'll vote for that one.
Sheila, did you... The numbers that you just read reflect the change the board just made?
No, they did not. Give her a moment.
Or do they need to be adjusted? If we need to take a recess to adjust the numbers, that's fine.
I was just going to say, these numbers are not reflective of the 6.3 change in millage, so we would have to restate it.
So let's take a recess. Okay. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Take five minutes to get it right. It's fine. Let's just do it right.
Okay. Welcome back. And we are here just wrapping up a public hearing, adopting a tentative millage rate. I will turn things over to our CFO, Sheila McLean.
Thank you, Chairman. All right, I'm ready to do the announcement. Now, the aggregate millage rate for fiscal year 2223 is here to be 6.6832 mills, and the change from the rollback aggregate millage rate is of 6.4344 mills. That stays the same. For the operating millage is hereby determined to be a positive 3.87%.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any further business? We're adjourned.